I call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen on the board. Can I get a motion for certification of closed session?
I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Is there any discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. I hereby open this public hearing on the operating budget. So, Ms. Cook, do you want to give the instructions?
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. This is the time when citizens who have signed on to our virtual meeting are invited to address the board. Speakers are asked to talk when their names are called and state their name for the record and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. Each speaker is allocated three minutes. Time cannot be yielded to another speaker. Two minutes, sorry, that was not, two minutes, I apologize for that. Personnel matters are not discussed in open school board meetings, and we ask that you refrain from making reference to specific individuals. The board is interested in hearing all comments fully and requests that citizens refrain from verbal outbursts, applause, or any type of demonstration. Although the board does not respond to comments at this time, please know we are listening and appreciate your time. Thank you for adhering to these guidelines, Mr. Chair, that my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Hardisty, you're first. Your two minutes starts now.
Hello, thank you for having me tonight. I'm here asking for requesting additional funds for kindergarten waivers for the Bright Beginnings Program for the next fiscal year coming. This year has been impacted by the COVID-19, and many students have not been able to attend school. Additional funding would allow for students that would be entering kindergarten to do an additional year that they have missed out. There are a lot of students that have not been able to attend in-person learning this year due to medical conditions and by their doctors telling them that they are not allowed to attend school, so they've only been doing the virtual learning. So, the additional kindergarten waiver funds would allow for students that were in that situation to be able to repeat the year and be able to be in kindergarten in a general education setting. Many of these students have developmental delays and impacted by situations within their families that have allowed them to need additional time to prepare for entering the general education system and kindergarten. So, I am just advocating for additional funding for students that need additional time, that there be a process developed for the kindergarten waiver. Right now, there is no process for the kindergarten waiver and who has given it, and I just think that they need to allow for students to, that are in the Bright Beginnings programs, to have an additional year to prepare themselves for kindergarten better, that have not been able to attend in-person learning this year.
Thank you, Ms. Hardisty.
Thank you. Ms. Baumgart?
Thank you.
The two minutes starts now, Ms. Baumgart.
Okay, Hi, School Board, my name is Gaila Baumgart. I have a first grader who is still in WJCC. I have a fourth grader who I put in private school. We intend to bring him back in the fall for fifth grade, hopefully. I'm going to read from my phone. I'm concerned that the enrollment and senior budgets are way off. With Senate Bill 1303 likely taking effect July 1, many families who left for private school and homeschool will be coming back with the reassurances that 1303 offers. I appreciate that there have been reserve teachers put in place, but are they elementary teachers? The decision to keep the low enrollment projections has real impact, especially in the younger years, where there has been so much loss of learning, but also where the largest number of students have left. I think it would be a good idea for the principals to reach out to the families who have left at the younger grade levels and just ask, you know, are you coming back next year? And maybe that would give you a better indication of, especially kindergarten, first grade, second, you know, with who's coming back and who's not, and maybe you could get a better idea about enrollment that way. I have a second thing I want to talk about. It's about, and I don't know if it's technically about the budget, but from what I could tell, the budget excluded anything about the CARES Act or the Second Stimulus, CRRSA monies. And I don't want to say it was deceitful, but it was minimal confusing to me and even to Mrs. Hummel at the last meeting when she asked about the Virtual Academy not being in the budget. While the budget looks normal, it's because there are these other pots of monies, and there's probably going to be a third pot of money that are sent over to the side and excluded. Although I understand why they're not part of the standard operating budget, is the public going to hear about what you're planning to spend these COVID-related dollars on? I was concerned that the budget looks normal, but everything abnormal related to COVID isn't in the budget, but in these separate pots of money. And if we're going to talk about expenditures and revenues, we need to talk about all the expenditures and all the revenues.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Baumgart, I appreciate it. That's all the public comment we have for this evening, so I'll close the public hearing. Takes us to 4.01. Ms. Robinson, can you take the roll, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here. Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Approval of the agenda, can I get a motion for approval of the agenda, please?
Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Owenby? Oops, sorry, I wasn't paying attention. Is there any discussion? Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Organization of the board, that takes us to 5.01. Can I get a motion for, motion to approve Ms. Beth Elar as the clerk of the Williamsburg James City County School Board through 2021?
Chair, I move that we approve Beth Elar as clerk to serve through 2021.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there any discussion?
Yay?
What's that?
Yay?
Is it her last chance to back out, is the question? Hearing none, Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Appreciate your service and you're willing to work with this group of seven folks. I'll leave it at that. That takes us to 5.02. Appointment of Deputy Clerk. Can I get a motion to approve Starr Robinson as the Deputy Clerk of the Williamsburg James City County School Board through 2021?
I move that we appoint Starr Robinson as Deputy Clerk to serve through 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Is there any discussion? I'd just like to thank her for her service as the clerk through these last few months and for her infectious smile and positive sense of humor. So, it's been a pleasure to work with you as the clerk. But we know where to find you now. Ms. Robinson?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. 6.01, Announcement Superintendent's Report. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report this evening is a joyous one as we celebrate the return of students at every grade level to school buildings across the division. WJCC school safety teams are visiting schools and report that students are wearing their masks and successfully following the safety protocols in classrooms and hallways. Building upon that success, we want to share the next step in our phased transition to more in-person learning. Beginning March 15th, all schools will operate on a full-day bell schedule while maintaining hybrid learning. You can see the schedule on the screen. As a reminder, hybrid learning includes two days of onsite and three days of remote learning for students separated into blue and green groups. You will note that we've moved to honor middle school to the traditional middle school schedule as part of the transition. The Bright Beginnings preschool program will continue to follow its current schedule. We're excited of students back in classrooms, and we are confident that with the proper mitigation strategies in place, we will be able to keep them there safely. As always, we will have a return to learn update for you later this evening. WJCC schools are celebrating music in our schools month. This year, guidance counselors and music teachers are partnering with the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra to strengthen the connections between music, education, and the social and emotional health of our students. The Symphony Orchestra has produced more than 20 short videos that will air during morning meetings at each elementary school during March. Here's an example this evening.
Hey, everyone. I'm Carl Lundgren with the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra, and I play the trombone. Today, I want to talk to you guys about facial expressions, because they matter. They matter a whole bunch. What our faces do, it's sort of like the outward-facing part of our personality. When our faces are doing stuff, we communicate things to other people. Does that make sense? If I were to tell you about how much I like you, and you're the best and you're the greatest, but I was making this face the whole time, then you would be confused. Or if I was telling you how sad I am, I'm so sad, it wouldn't make much sense, because my face is telling you that I'm happy. So, musicians, we use facial expressions all the time when we play music. We do it to share emotions. We do it to play with each other and to share what's going on with each other. Because music, and really any kind of art, is about humanity. And humanity is what connects all of us, because we're all human beings, right? So, when we do this, when we play music, we try to share that with our body gestures and with our faces. That's how we communicate ideas. Now, it's important to be mindful of what your face is doing, because sometimes you might be saying something differently with your face than you actually feel. An example of this I will share is this photograph that was taken of me at a gig recently. I was at a performance, and I was listening to my friend Ellis play a really cool trumpet solo, and for some reason, I was making this face. Look at this picture. I look mean. I look angry. What am I looking at? What am I staring at? I don't know. I don't like that picture. I don't like that it's on the internet. I don't like that I made that face. I don't remember making that face, but apparently I did. So, it's important to be mindful of what your face is doing at all times, when you're listening to your friends or your teachers or your parents or, you know, whomever, and just whatever's going on, be aware of what your face is saying, because it matters a whole bunch. Makes sense? Okay, let's play "What's in My Case." This is going to be kind of a weird one. We'll see if you guys know what this is. So, this is the case. Looks like this, and on the inside, it looks like this. This is called a melodica, melodica. And it's basically like a little piano keyboard with a hose, and you blow into this, and it's what creates the sound. It sort of sounds a little bit like an accordion, and you just kind of go like this. Pretty cool, right? Pretty easy to play. Small, portable. Ask your parents about it. It's called a melodica. It's a lot of fun to play. All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you, Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra, for your wonderful partnership with us. Finally, I want to remind our families and viewers that March is also when WJCC schools recognizes Disability Awareness Month. Through classroom conversations and special events, our schools strive to increase awareness of the various disabilities represented in our schools and promote positive attitudes by creating a culture by creating a culture of mutual respect and understanding. I've got a few important dates for you to mark on your calendar. March 9th and March 11th, students and staff will wear green in recognition of cerebral palsy awareness. Then, on March 21st, you are asked to wear your brightest socks in honor of World Down Syndrome Day. Schools will share information and have conversations with students related to both of these special days. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Not sure how facial expressions are going to really work when they're masked, so it's kind of like from the nose up, but it's a, it's a great message, and I appreciate the Symphony Orchestra leading in that way. Ms. Owenby?
Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, I just have a couple of follow-up questions, and I might have missed this, when you were talking about Tuanno and Tuanno's schedule, are, are all of the middle schools on the same schedule? Did I miss that?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're all on the same schedule. And then, with regard to lunch, since the high school day is going to go back to a typical day, what is lunch going to look like? Because I know that was, I thought that was a part of why we had it truncated initially.
We're working on the process for lunch, and we have a plan, and it should be ready to be in operation after two weeks in the building. We're giving two weeks in the building for the students to climatize, then we'll introduce lunch and go to the full day.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Takes us 7.01, citizens' comments.
My name is Katie Klein, and I'm a parent of three WJCC students, one at Stan House Elementary, one at Tuanno Middle, and one at Warhill High. After listening to numerous school board meetings about their decline in student progress this school year, I'm concerned that little attention has been brought to the change in the school schedule for our high school students. My son's now at straight A's last school year, but is barely maintaining honor roll this school year. Eight year-long classes, virtually, without an AEP or study hall option for extra assistance is taking its toll on many high school students. Please consider a change. My son spends hours each night completing homework to keep up with all of his classes. Please consider going back to the four-by-four schedule in future years. I am also a WJCC employee at Tuanno Middle School. I've listened to the school board in past meetings as you've been concerned over the retention of teachers, and you've compared our division to York County and other surrounding areas. I'm afraid we're going to lose qualified middle school teachers as you've not treated us fairly. Please give the middle school teachers back our second planning period. Currently, I teach five classes with one planning period. This time is not adequate to prepare enriching lessons, to reach out to students' parents, to attend IEP meetings, to grade papers, or the other jobs that you continue to give to us. Please relook at the huge changes the board approved to the middle and high school schedule last year. High school students need a four-by-four schedule, and middle school teachers need adequate planning time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Christine Webster-Coburnley. This comment is about parents not being able to watch their kids during the football game. I don't understand why we cannot go into the stadium. The stadium is big enough to where there can be six-foot distancing. Every other county is allowed to go in, the parents are allowed to go into the stadium to watch their kids play. Parents should be able to go into the stadium and watch their kids play. I don't understand why y'all are the only county that's not allowing it. Parents should be able to support their kids and cheer on their kids. They're not going, they're suffering through this pandemic like everyone else, and I think the parents should be there to support them and show them that we are supporting them through this, and that all their hard work is not going in vain. So again, parents should be able to go into the stadium to watch their kids play during football season. Thank you.
This is Lucy Francine. I would like to be able to see my son play football at Warhill High School, and I want to know why other areas, schools are able to see their kids, even if it's just two members from each family. We should be allowed to see our kids play also and be safe, wearing masks, and other PPE during the virus time. That's all I wanted to say.
Hi, this is Carrie Henderson, and I wanted to call and say thank you for getting our students back at least two days a week. The mitigation strategies seem to be in place and working. Teachers are vaccinated and cases are rapidly dropping. Now is the time to start making up for lost time, and I ask that you please return the kids five days a week, especially elementary-age children. I'd also like to request that vision services be returned to in-person. Vision students and their needs are similar to many children with IEPs and benefit significantly from coursework and enrichment specific to their needs, and these needs are just not being met virtually. Thank you, have a good evening.
Brittany Byer, my comment is to open schools five days a week. Several other districts in our near vicinity are open five days a week, and it is working. I'm not sure what the issue with James City County is with the school board decisions. I would also like to say that students that are doing hybrid, mine included, are not learning as efficiently as they would be if they were in school with a teacher doing daily instruction. Thank you.
Hi, this is Brooke Van Disking. I am a resident of James City County. My child goes to Matoka Elementary School. I am just calling to thank you for having schools open on the hybrid model. It's made the world of difference to my daughter. I'm calling also to ask for your consideration of going ahead and opening five days a week as soon as possible, so that our children can really make the most of what is left of this school year. All right, thank you for your consideration.
Hi, this is Greta Van, and I have a son at Hornsby Middle. I just wanted to call in again and express my support for getting these kids back to school full-time, five days a week. We have continuously listed all types of reasons why these kids need to be back in school. I understand some parents are concerned, but those parents have an option. They have the virtual option, but the parents who support our kids being back in school five days a week, we understand the science, we understand the mitigation factors that you guys have taken and put in place, which we greatly appreciate. So please, get these kids back in school five days a week, mask them up, and keep them up to, you know, three feet apart. The CDC guidance is very clear that it's a layered approach, and I think WJCC Schools have done a good job of putting in those layers, and the mandatory six feet is, is not a law, it's a guidance. And three feet are working for other school districts. So please, get our kids back in school five days a week, they've suffered enough. Thank you.
Kayla Baumgart, I'm calling to ask that the one hour that has been cut off from the school day in elementary school on the two days that they are in-person be added back in. Those kids need all the in-school time they can get. Already so much is being crammed into those two days. At least for the two days they are in school, allow them to go a full day. Better yet, the elementary school can go back full-time. Let families choose to stay virtual and allow the others to go back to school full-time. School is a safe place where COVID is not spreading around, even with full classes. My nieces and nephews have been in school full-time this entire school year, played sports, and had all after-school activities. WJCC has gotten this wrong from the start, and the sooner you correct it, the better. This community deserves a functional public school system, which we have not now had for over a year. We do not need a slow-paced gradual reopening. School is safe, just reopen fully with the best mitigation to the greatest extent that is practical without sacrificing education. It really is that simple. Thank you.
My name is Claudia Kessel. I have a kindergarten-age student, and I want to voice my support for the teacher raises that you voted on in the last meeting, and hope that you will continue to show leadership to keep raising teachers' salaries regularly in the future. As a profession, teachers are not given the prestige or the pay that they deserve for their level of responsibility in nurturing our children's minds. Their work is so vital and so much is expected from them, especially during this past crazy pandemic year. Second, it's wonderful that students are returning to hybrid schedules now, but let's remember that two days a week of instruction and the rest virtual means that for many students, only 40% of a real school week is happening. This is definitely not a long-term solution, and many of the kids cannot keep up to grade level with such a schedule. This is a good step in the right direction, but not yet something to celebrate or to self-congratulate about. I would like to hear a greater sense of urgency from Dr. Heron, a sense of dissatisfaction with the current situation until all students return 100% five days a week in person, if they so wish. Please focus on getting those kids back as soon as you can, and definitely by next school year. Thank you.
Hi, Thomas Byer. I'm calling to, again, explain why I believe that schools should be open five days a week, not two days a week. And again, at the very least, you can open up on Friday. There is, continues to be no reason why you can't open up school the additional day. And in a number of ways, what you're doing now is providing less education to the kids because they're not doing the virtual classes, the days they're not in school. So, you know, continues to be this back-and-forth game that you're playing. The numbers of cases continue to decrease, and the school board and superintendent need to wake up and do the right thing, put these kids back in school five days a week. Enough is enough already. Please listen to people who are asking you to do this. The polls show that everybody wants these kids back in school, or the vast majority of people do. Please, come on, let's go, do the right thing, James City County.
Hi, my name is Allison Segler. I wanted to call and voice my support for continuing to, on the hybrid plan with students in school two days a week, and eventually transition to five days a week this spring. Thank you so much for bringing the kids back in the last month. My middle schools are very excited to start school next week. I want to thank you for your continued support, and again, I also want to voice my support for continuing to move onto the path of five days a week in-person learning by the end of this school year. Thank you so much.
Kate McAdoo, I'm calling to support a full-time return to learn for all students. Every grade level should be in school, Monday through Friday, for normal school hours. It is ludicrous that we are still having this conversation at this point. It's very disappointing that our school district leadership has been trying to come up with a plan since March of 2020 and continues to fail. While others amongst us are moving forward, we continue to stand still at the cost of our children's education. The ultra-conservative perspective of our superintendent and our school board needs to stop, and is not scientifically based. In fact, our health experts are telling us to do the very opposite in terms of getting our kids back to school. We also need definitive answers for summer school options. Summer school should not only be offered to those kids that are failing, but for those kids that received a poor education throughout this hybrid virtual nightmare that we've been living in for the past year. Please do right by our children and get everyone back to school full-time.
My name is Janine Fountain. I'd like to know if there's a plan for the fall reopening, what that plan is, and to the degree you can, how much certainty do we have in our children going back to school five days a week? I had to pull my child out this past year and put them in private school because they simply cannot do a virtual environment, and I'd really like to return them to the public school, but private schools are in the process of enrolling, and I need to make that decision quickly. So I'm hoping the school board will have a recommendation sooner than later on the status of opening and which pathways will be available in the fall. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kirsten Stinson, and I have a 12th, oh, excuse me, 11th-grade daughter, and I'm calling to just state that I want my daughter back in school five days a week in the fall, and I need, I'm sure like everybody else, to make a decision on where she's going to go to school next year. I'd rather not pull her out of the public school system, but if we are not in school in-person five days a week, I am going to have to look at that possibility. So please, do what you can and do what needs to be done, and if we can all go to church and go to restaurants and go to the ABC store and go to the gym, we should be able to send our kids to school. Thank you.
My name is Erica Hys, I'm requesting that school be opened five days a week for students who wish for in-person instruction. That is all, thank you.
Hello, this is Hillary Beaver. I was just calling to voice my support for in-school learning, and I was hoping to get some answers, or I guess get some questions answered, as far as going back to school five days a week this coming fall, if the district has a plan for that, for our kids to have the option to go to school full-time five days a week. Thanks so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you to all the people, the, the citizens who made public comment tonight, definitely appreciated and definitely listened to and considered, so I thank you, I thank you for taking the time to present your comments. 8.01, award contract for media equipment and telecommunications repairs and services, Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Landers is here to present an annual contract for media equipment and services. Mr. Landers?
Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. This evening, we are asking for your consideration and approval of a contract to support our division's telecom and media services infrastructure, which includes our IPACs telephone system, screen beam classroom presentation, network-based security camera systems, school public address systems, VBRic media origination and retrieval systems, as well as our instructional space presentation and control equipment. These systems require periodic professional services support and maintenance on an as-needed basis. The purpose of this contract is to have a pre-approved purchasing vehicle with agreed pricing in place with which to authorize these services. Previous support contract expired in March of 2020, however, it was granted a one-year COVID extension and now expires March of 2021. To replace this support services contract, the division working through James City County Purchasing issued RFP 21-15019 on December 17th, which closed on January 19th. The RFP was posted on Eva, Demandstar, as well as the county procurement website. One proposal was received. The proposal was reviewed and evaluated based on the criteria of technical abilities of the vendor, support capabilities of the vendor, equipment pricing discount offered to the division, cost of services, as well as vendor references. A review committee determined that Office Pro Technologies, or Optech, was qualified, and the submittment of the service needs detailed in the RFP and offered fair pricing. Of note, any individual purchases exceeding $100,000 would still be brought before the board for approval according to policy. Thank you, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from board members? Ms. Owenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Landers, I'm just curious, are we using Optech now?
Yes, they are the incumbent.
Thank you.
That was your question. Any other questions from board members? This is a level-of-effort contract, so as they identify things that need to be...
Yes, as we, as we identify areas that we need the services, we call them in, and we have the agreed pricing, hourly rates, equipment rates upfront.
But with, with one respondent, are we, what, what do, how do we justify that we are sure we've gotten a fair and reasonable price?
Well, first off, they had absolutely no escalation in their pricing from the previous contract. We also worked hand-in-hand with James City County Purchasing, through which, through their experience looking at typical price ranges for said services, they were able to offer us a level of comfort as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Any other comments from board members? Okay, thank you, Mr. Landers, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
8.02, approved purchase requests of laptops for elementary and middle school teacher use and the associated budget transfer. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Landers is going to stay with us and, and talk about the refresh technology cycle.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. This agenda item is to ask for your approval of purchasing elementary and middle school teacher-use laptops and services and the supporting budget transfer in continuation of our ongoing technology refresh cycle. The purchase request will provide 550 elementary teacher laptops, 275 middle school teacher laptops, as well as insurance and extended services for a total purchase price of $652,163. The purchase will be made using the TIPS contract with Lenovo. Thank you, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from board members? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Dowell. I, I guess my question is, and I, and this is fine, I support this, but if it's a refresh, I'm just curious why a budget transfer is required, if it wasn't already built into the budget, since it's a refresh?
Well, we're hoping to get a little bit ahead of our refresh cycle and allow the TIPs... teachers to be able to take the devices home with them during the summer. This was built into our budget actually for next year, but by using the budget transfer, we're able to get a little bit ahead of it, provide the laptops to the teachers before they go home from the summer, and try to get a little more smooth on our overall four-year refresh cycle.
This is more of a smoothing effort because we purchased so much technology recently? Is that...
That, that's part of it, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then is the, this may not be a question for you, so if it isn't, I can get the answer later. Is the budget transfer, is that money available because of attrition?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Young?
I, I have a question because it, it came to my attention that, that some of the, the quality of Lenovo didn't always provide the level needed to provide instruction. I mean, are, are we secure in the concept that this is a good purchase for our school district?
We are very, very confident in the purchase. I'm not sure where some of the comments may have had, but I will tell you from my knowledge that our current elementary lap, elementary teacher laptops, first off, they're on the last year of their cycle, of a four-year cycle. And honestly, they just did not have enough RAM. You know, technology has changed over four years, that they're requiring much more RAM as opposed to four years ago. So we have taken that into account with these devices that we're recommending. We have also invited the teachers to come in and take a look at them and give us their thoughts and their recommendations. The teacher work group is a standing work group that, that we meet with regularly to get their input and feedback, and we're confident that these will absolutely meet the job for several years to come.
Thank you.
Ms. Ombi?
Mr. Landers, if I, if I could just share, maybe add on to Ms. Young's comments. Correct me if I'm wrong, because my understanding may be initially in the beginning of this school year at the elementary level, as teachers had worked all summer long to create curriculum, they weren't aware of what device students would have. And so we found early on that there was a bit of a disconnect with some of the links and the way that students access that because they had, they had assumed that it would, that those new devices would operate a lot like what was currently in the building. Maybe, maybe you don't know the answer to that. But I think that maybe gets back to what you were talking about, Ms. Young, that there was a bit of a disconnect with what we thought we were going to have and what we did get with the curriculum funding.
Um, well, there, there's probably some truth to that because initially, you know, between the different systems that are available for teachers to use, there may have been a bit of a disconnect which, which one they were using, whether or not they were Zooming, whether or not they were using another system. So I could certainly see some truth to that. Yes, ma'am.
I, I think those glitches were eventually worked out, but it was a little bumpy going in the beginning.
Any other comments from board members? Ms. Young?
I, I guess my, my concern is, is for the teachers. We, we already know they've been under a tremendous amount of stress this year and, and change and, and I, I'm, it just might be coming back to you, Mr. Landers. I want to make sure our teachers are taken care of. That's the only reason I'm asking the question, is I, I don't want them to be any more frustrated than they have been. And I don't, certainly don't want technology, although technology drives me insane, to be the cause of more stress. That's, that's the reason I'm asking the question.
Oh, yes, ma'am, and I absolutely respect that, and I agree with you. I don't want to provide any more stress to our teachers either. So we, we have made some significant gains with this device. I don't want to go through and rattle off a bunch of technical terms, but basically, these will have a solid-state drive, which is much faster than the current devices. It doubles the amount of RAM that is available in the laptop so that it will be much quicker to respond. And that's also part of the reason that we want to purchase them now rather than waiting for the summer, so that they have some time to work with them before they go home for the summer, to transfer that curriculum, those notes, all of their resources that they want to be able to take with them.
Yes, you just brought up another question for me. Is there a reason we don't allow teachers to use their own devices? I mean, I understand the idea behind malware and, and all of that and hacking, but isn't there a way that, that the school division could secure their devices also?
Well, I think then the issue would be that we would have absolute, in addition to the security concerns which you mentioned, we would also have no way to verify that a teacher's personally-owned device would work with our resources. You know, would it work properly with Zoom? Would it work properly with Synergy? There are so many different systems that we have to make sure every device will work with properly. And when you get into an area of personally-owned devices, there's just no way to verify that. And then there's also the additional cost of the licenses. You know, the licenses for all of our software are covered by having divisioned-owned devices, where I'm not, as a division, we're not allowed to buy a license for a personal device. That person would have to make that purchase. So there, there's a lot to take into account with personally-owned devices that would make things a, a bit more complicated to try to work out.
Sounds like it'd be a lot more complicated. Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from board members? Thank you, Mr. Landers.
Thank you.
I would like to say that on behalf of the board, that over the past year, the amount of technology that you have implemented, procured, put in service is astonishing. And I know I thank you, and I think the rest of the board thanks you for the work of you and your team in getting that done, so I appreciate that greatly.
Thank you very much.
8.03, award contracts for request for proposal 21-14967, world languages curriculum resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Worley is going to present this item tonight regarding world languages resources. Thank you, Dr. Worley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the school board. This evening, we're asking your consideration for the proposed agenda item 8.03, which outlines the request for proposal, or request for proposal or RFP number 2114967 on world language curriculum resources. The RFP was designed to update secondary world language resources to support the new WJCC curriculum that is aligned with the Virginia Department of Education 2020 World Language Revised Standards. The last large-scale resource requisition for grades six through 12 in world language was in 2006. This RFP was issued on January 4th, 2021, with the due date of February 3rd, 2021. The committee utilized a rubric to score responses that included the review of vendor qualifications, the understanding of the statement of needs, the ability to meet the RFP requirements, the functionality of print and/or digital resources, cost, and a proposed work plan that demonstrates the firm's ability to provide support, professional development and training. As a result, the committee put forth recommendations for contracts with suitable vendors. Our next steps following board approval include extended committee work to review and select appropriate digital and text resources to support a variety of languages in our world language program. If you have any questions, I will be glad to answer them at this time.
Any questions from board members? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Doc, thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, Dr. Worley. Did you say the last time we bought curriculum resources for world language was 2006? Is that what you said?
The last time that there was, yes, the last time we had a, a large look at the, it was 2006 for world language, the update.
So we haven't, WJCC hasn't purchased...
Like a major update, the last one. I think we've probably purchased replacement textbooks, but the curriculum has been updated. We updated our curriculum with the 2020 standards.
And did a school board member serve on a committee related to this? Or is that something else?
A school board member will serve on the committee when we choose the resources. Yes.
Yes, Dr. Beer's volunteered for that assignment.
Yes.
Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Worley, I'm just curious, are this, is this resource both physical and digital? Or one or the other?
The extended committee will identify exactly what they use, but yes, the part of the RFP was we wanted print and digital resources to be accessible, and we need a variety of resources to support the different languages.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, Dr. Worley, is this for textbooks or this is for, this isn't for, this is for resources?
It's for resources. They could be textbooks, print, and digital resources, and that will be a committee decision moving forward.
So would the, so the vendors will propose to you and then the, that's, will be considered by the committee?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions from board members? Thank you, Dr. Worley.
You're welcome.
8.04, award a contract for request for proposal 21-15127, architectural services for the War Hill High School Auxiliary Gymnasium. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe Mr. Snipes is going to join us via Zoom to speak to the next three items on the agenda, and the first of those being the War Hill Gym.
Good evening, school board members, Chairman Keller and Dr. Heron. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah.
Tonight's proposed placeholder agenda item is presented for your consideration and subsequent award of RFP number 21-15127, which is the architectural services for the War Hill High School Auxiliary Gym. As you recall, the FY20 CIP included $890,412 for A&E services at War Hill High School. This project includes architectural services to produce detailed designs, construction drawings, specifications, contract documents, and to obtain the necessary regulated, related regulatory approvals for the construction of the auxiliary gym. It's the division's intent to construct the auxiliary gym on the same parcel of land that War Hill High School currently occupies. A request for proposal was issued on January 25th, 2021, with the due date of February 25th, 2021. At the time this item was prepared, the, at the time this agenda item was prepared, the bid opening process had not been completed, and the detailed vendor information will be included at the time of the award. The superintendent recommends that the board review the project information and be prepared to vote when the completed award information is presented. Thank you, I'm here to answer any question.
Any board members have any questions? Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes, this project, is this project being done in concert with James City County so that this can serve as a shelter for them as well?
You are correct. We have consulted with the Emergency Operations Center as well as the James City County to ensure this becomes a shelter.
And so, and so this, the architectural services will reflect that double, that dual use, is that correct?
Yes, it will, the architectural services will reflect that. It will be built to withstand windborne debris and to withstand tornadoes and hurricanes. It will be built under the shelter ramifications, excuse me, the shelter specifications of IFMA.
So as a result of that, will James City County be involved in this RF, you know, in the RFP review team and, and construction and design and everything? Will they be involved in that whole process?
Yes, they are a part of the evaluation committee. They are members of the James City County as well as, I believe, the social services who are a part of the evaluation committee.
Great. I love the teamwork, and I love that this can have a dual use to serve our community more broadly. But I just, if there's any tension between what they need and what we need, I hope the response to that is to do both as opposed to cut back on anything that we need. Does that, does that make sense?
That makes, that makes ultimate sense, and I will consult with Mr. Keever and Dr. Heron throughout the process as well.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that our student, I like the dual use, I like the cooperation, I think it's excellent, but I don't want to sacrifice anything that our students need because of that dual use.
Yes, it will absolutely be an auxiliary gym first and a shelter second.
Mr. Dell?
Mr. Chair, I'm curious, when you said it's our intent or the division's intent to construct the auxiliary gym on the same site as the school, I, I kind of honed in on intent. Is it possible that it would not? And is, is that being driven by it being used as a dual-use, dual-used shelter in a sense?
I believe the word intent is there because that is, that is our intent to do so. It is not to be perceived as negative that we're doing something other than that. So we are planning to put it on the same property that War Hill High School.
Got you. Okay, so when I heard that, I, I heard it's also possible that it would be somewhere else, so, but thank you for clearing that up for me.
Ms. Ombi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Snipes, because there'll be dual purposes or an additional cost involved in, meaning the specifications for it to be a shelter?
Are you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the first part. You say, will there be additional cost?
Correct.
The cost of the auxiliary gym has been included, I believe, in the FY22 CIP at about $3.3 million. It increased from about $2.6 when we decided to create it as a shelter.
Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Mr. Snipes, I think you, I think War Hill, the original design included the accommodations for, for this auxiliary gym, is that right?
Um, I will have to research that, but I believe you are correct that the space where the gym, the auxiliary gym would go was intended for an auxiliary gym. And of course, we built our schools to be able to expand.
Right. And, and because it's a shelter, there'll, there'll be more screws holding the roof on and structure and that kind of thing to make sure that it can...
That's correct. Like it will be able to withstand windborne debris and meet all of the requirements of the International Facility Managers Association for tornadoes and hurricanes.
Great, thank you. Any other comments from board members? Okay, great, thank you. 8.05, award a contract for RFP 2115142, fleet locator and timekeeping system. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the board may remember, from last year, we put this project on hold because, because of COVID, because we didn't want to invest in a system when we didn't know the future and, and the support for funding the system. And so we're bringing to you right now the opportunity to consider a fleet locator and timekeeping system. Mr. Snipes?
All right. Again, this place, this is a placeholder agenda item is presented for your consideration and subsequent approval. The fleet locator and timekeeping system is our effort to streamline and improve operations. We're looking for a vendor that will provide a GPS automated vehicle locator tracking system, time and attendance, parent notification, which you're currently familiar with, with our Here Comes the Bus, employee and in-vehicle data, report options, map printing, et cetera. The vendor solution shall additionally provide all professional services necessary to provide an integrated fleet locator timekeeping system for our school systems in accordance with the requirements of the RFP. Again, this is a, this is a placeholder agenda item, and the detailed vendor award information will be included on your April 13th, 2020 agenda. The superintendent recommends that the board review this project information and be prepared to vote at that meeting. Mr. Lambusta, who is the Director of Transportation, and I are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Ms. Ombi?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say I'm pleased to see this is back. I was excited when we proposed this last year. I think anytime that we can streamline and increase how we perform, and transportation is important, so I'm excited to see this back on the agenda.
Ms. Hummel?
Uh, I am too. I am wondering if, as part of this RFP, if there's an optimization component for routing?
Mr. Lambusta?
To increase the efficiency of routes and optimize routes so that, you know, we're just doing the best job. No? No?
No, ma'am. For the, the original RFP, last year, we were looking at, it was referred to as the pupil transportation system. That was much more extensive, that did include routing. It included trips. This does not include routing or trips. This is primarily your GPS, your, your employee attendance tracking system, the Here Comes the Bus, but no routing or trips. That, that system we were looking at was, was quite a bit more expensive. However, we believe that we may be able to upgrade our, we may be able to upgrade our current system perhaps sometime down the road as far as our routing system.
Uh, thank you. I would love to be just kept apprised of the development of that or the possibility of that because, you know, I, I think the more we can optimize our routes, the more money we can save, the better for our students, the, the better schedules. So if you could just keep the board apprised on that, it would be great.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Mr. Lambusta, while you're still with us. Can you, perhaps maybe not tonight, but it would be helpful to know what that pupil system would have cost and what the comparison is for upgrading our... what the comparison is for upgrading our current recommended system. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments from board members? All right, thank you, Mr. Lambusta. Kira, Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I'd like to jump on the optimization bandwagon and think that that is really important. When I look at, you know, the amount of money that we spend on transportation, I always wonder if that can be reduced. One question I've always had is when we look at our transportation policy, which is, you know, student, I think, walk one mile for middle and high school and half a mile, I think, for elementary school to the bus stop. I'm pretty sure none of our kids do that, and I'm not sure that I would necessarily advocate for that, but I would love the opportunity for us to be able to analyze that and figure out if we could have fewer stops and have kids travel a little bit further. And I know some of our, particularly in the county, there's not a whole lot of sidewalks. There's narrow windy roads with ditches in the, you know, on the shoulders. And so walking to the bus stop may not be safe, in which case I think it's fine to pick them up closer to home. But in other places where there are more, you know, kind of cul-de-sac neighborhoods, I just think it would be wonderful to have the wherewithal, the technology to optimize our routes a little bit more and, and fiddle around with the distance that students walk to, to the bus stops to save, to save gas and to save money and save time.
Yes, Ms. Cook, our current system, TransFinder, does that. And we recently had conversations with TransFinder to discuss upgrading the optimization as early as last week. So we are able to, to run those optimizations, but the new platform will allow us to do much more.
Thank you.
Ms. Hummel?
Ms. Ollie?
Hummel. Ms. Hummel.
Did you?
I'm pretty sure I did.
Okay, that's our Ollie, yeah. Our Ollie, too.
Anyway, along those same lines, it would be helpful, when we're looking at redistricting in the future, when we're looking at spot redistricting if necessary, when we're looking at a new elementary school, to be able to do some of the analysis in-house rather than paying probably an outside consultant a lot more money. So I just want us to be self-sufficient, use our funds well, and if it costs more money, bring it to the board for our consideration.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments from board members? Eight point zero six, award a contract for bid number twenty-one dash one-four-nine-five-nine, roof restoration at Stonehouse Elementary School. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is again in the CIP, and Mr. Snipes is going to speak to it.
Uh, thanks, thanks again for allowing us to come before you. This is a placeholder agenda item for your consideration and subsequent approval. This project was approved in the FY twenty CIP in the amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. And the project is scheduled to be completed prior to the start of the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school year. And so make, kind of in summary, the project's scope really is to replace and repair deteriorated decking as required, provide some installation, insulation, and install a new reinforced single ply membrane system over the kitchen and mechanical areas, and select repairs to the metal roof gutters and downspouts. This project was identified in the Facility Condition Index as a need. An invitation for bid was issued on February ninth, twenty-twenty-one, with a due date of March second, twenty-twenty-one. And as I said, at the time this item was prepared, the bid opening process had not been completed, but a detailed vendor award information will be included at your March sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one agenda, school board meeting. Mr. Falzone, who is the Supervisor of Facilities and Capital Projects, is available, and so am I tonight, to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions from board members? Yes. Mr. Dowell?
Last year, it was January, February, I was privileged to visit Stonehouse, and it was pouring that day, and I got to see many of the leaks, the, the issues of the roof. You mentioned, and I'm not a roofing contractor in the slightest, but you mentioned some very specific areas. I'm curious, in particular, will the roof above the gym be addressed? That was a major issue for Stonehouse.
Mr. Falzone can answer, but I believe some of those areas were addressed early this year. Mr. Falzone?
Everybody, thanks. There are some specific areas, yeah. There are a couple of areas over the roof. By and large, that, that standing seam metal roof area is not being addressed through this project. There are just a few real trouble spots. The roof was installed approximately in the year two thousands, and it's really mostly the flat roofs that were meant to be taken care of through this particular CIP item. The standing, the pitched roof, the green standing metal seam roof is expected to be, it's in the CIP for the year twenty-twenty-eight. So what, what we are planning on fixing in this particular go-around is just some real trouble areas, places where we have very overt holes in the standing metal seam roof, places where we have fasteners and bolts and things like that that are rusting out. Certainly, if you were there, Mr. Dowell, during a rainstorm, you saw that when that water just rips off that, that metal roof at a high speed, it bypasses those gutters altogether and just dumps out. Sometimes some of those doors look like you're, you're standing in a shower. So we're hoping to rectify mostly a lot of gutter and downspout issues as well.
Appreciate that, Mr. Falzone. So I think what I heard was that prior to today, the area over the gym has not been repaired. Did I understand that right?
Um, well, we're always repairing, always repairing the roof at Stonehouse, but that, we're only, only planning on repairing the areas that we know about that are currently leaking. We're not looking to do any large-scale tear-off of the gym roof or any of the other metal, metal roofing at this point.
It is a major, major safety hazard in that gym. It's already a very slick floor and water on top of it. When I was in there, they had large dumpsters, I would say five or six in different areas in the gym, and they weren't catching all the water. They weren't able to. And at the same time, they had a gym class running. They had children running around the gym, and it made me very uncomfortable seeing it. We need to get that roof, especially over gym, addressed sooner than later. I think we've been fortunate that we haven't had students there this year, unfortunately fortunate, but they're coming back, and it is a severe safety issue.
I should add, I'm sorry, Mr. Snipes, go ahead. Mr. Dowell, we will advise you of where we repaired the, the roof because we have made repairs there so far.
Thank you.
I can also tell you that the intention is to, after this project, all known leaks will have been repaired.
Thank you. Those are good words, I think, that Mr. Dowell wanted to hear. So as he coincidentally took his tour of Stonehouse and coincidentally saw the leaks in the roof of the gym. So I'm sure there wasn't.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, so.
Thank you, Mr. Falzone.
Those are good words. Any other questions, comments? Thank you, Mr. Snipes, for your time this evening and for your, for your, your team as well. So appreciate the, appreciate the contributions.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Eight point zero one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two school calendar. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Keever's going to present some school calendar options this evening for your consideration. Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, school board members. I'd like to share with you two draft versions of an academic calendar for twenty-one, twenty-two. Some of this information we did preview for the board at our February sixteenth meeting. I will give you a few more details this evening. You also have draft versions of the calendar, I believe, and the school board information that was shared with you at the end of last week. You may recall that when we got together on the sixteenth of February, we shared with the board six specific key considerations that the calendar committee talked about and led to the process of developing the calendar, from doing what's best for student wellness and achievement, the potential for a pre-Labor Day start, instructional continuity, and by, by that we mean fewer early release days sprinkled throughout the calendar, continuing opportunities for teacher collaboration and professional development, leveraging the virtual and online options in the calendar as one of the key learning pieces that we've had this year, and then avoiding the first day of school on Rosh Hashanah. Also shared last time that a couple of the lessons learned over the course of this particular school year was this idea about considering virtual options for families when it came to open house and back-to-school nights, parent and family conferences. By including this as a lesson learned, we're not suggesting that all of this were to take place in a virtual space or online, but that we could maximize time and also provide families options when it comes to being able to participate, whether it be face-to-face or virtually. Also, another lesson learned and something that came forward from the committee, which was represented, representative of teachers and members of staff, et cetera, was this idea of the strength of teacher collaboration and professional development that have occurred over the course of this year. And part of the, part of the other pieces that came forward was the idea that sometimes those early release days that we've had in our calendars have not always provided the, the most, the most coordinated opportunity for professional learning. Because by the time that the students are in and the students are dismissed and teachers move on to the professional learning and professional development, the day has slipped away. And so we looked at and considered the idea of creating three designated virtual learning days in the calendar in order to help accomplish that. Wanted to share with the board just for consideration that in both versions of the draft calendars that, that you have, we have placed three K-12 virtual learning days, one at the beginning part of October, one towards the end of January, and another towards the beginning of March. There are some early release days that are still in the draft calendars that we shared with you, but wanted to give for you by way of example, the, the fewer, how many days we have removed in terms of early release days. So for instance, at elementary school, there would be six early release days in the calendar, which would be three fewer than previous years. Three of those early release days at the elementary level would be utilized for parent conferences. One would occur right before the spring break vacation, and then two at the very end part of the year in terms of teacher record closeout. At the middle school level, the number would go from seven to three. Those three early release days for middle school would include, again, the day before spring break holiday, and then the two days at the very end of the year for teacher record closeout. And then finally, the high school number would go from eleven to five. That would, those five days would include four, excuse me, three, four exams, and then two, one, one right before spring break, and now my math's all messed up. One right before spring break, four, releasing as we get into the exam period in June. As we shared with you last time, here are a couple of the key dates relative to the academic calendar for a pre-Labor Day start. We are contending that the school year would begin on Monday, August thirtieth. Again, three days at the Thanksgiving holiday, two full weeks at the winter break, spring vacation aligned with the rest of the region, April fourth through eighth, and then the last day of school for WJCC would be Friday, June the tenth. For your information and probably more for the public's information, here is a quick snapshot of the fall semester with the pre-Labor Day start. You can see that star on August the thirtieth, which signifies the beginning part of the school year. You will also note within this calendar that we are recommending on October first, it would be that virtual learning day that we touched on previously. The marking period, marking period one would conclude on November first. November second, which is Election Day, would be a student holiday, and then November third, we would kick off marking period two. See the early release days in there in the third week of November. Flashing forward to January, you'll note that we placed another virtual learning day on the twenty-seventh of January, which is a Thursday. And then Friday, the twenty-eighth, would be a student holiday and a, and a teacher records workday, starting marking period three on Monday, the thirty-first of January. Here's a look at the second semester, the spring semester for the pre-Labor Day calendar. Month of February, the, the one non-school day, holiday would be President's Day, which is the twenty-first of February. March, we are suggesting on March fourth, the idea of a virtual learning day, K-12. An early release day there for elementary on the eighteenth of March. You mentioned the K-12 early release day, the day leading into spring break. There is also the opportunity for Memorial Day to be celebrated, and then the school year concluding on the tenth of June. Wanted to just talk briefly about the designation of days in terms of marking periods over the course of the pre-Labor Day calendar. If you divide a hundred and eighty by four, you will come up with forty-five days. That would be a totally equitable split across the different marking periods. While that sometimes might be considered desirable, we also took into consideration where there were natural breaks in the calendar, where there were natural opportunities for teacher workdays or spring breaks or those kinds of scenarios. So what we'd be proposing with the pre-Labor Day calendar would have the marking periods that look like this, forty-four, forty-eight, forty-four, and forty-four. And then finally, wanted to just mention a few of the strengths that were brought forward in terms of starting the school year prior to Labor Day. Shortens the instructional gap of the summer by at least four days. In terms of instruction, there are more instructional days before the high-stakes testing, which occurs towards the latter part of the school year. As we mentioned last time, that would, that would also provide for fewer school days after testing concludes, and then we would avoid the first day of school on Rosh Hashanah. Wanted to shift and just give a preview of a post-Labor Day calendar, which is the second option that will be shared with our community. Students returning to school on Wednesday, September the eighth, Thanksgiving break for those three days in November, full two weeks of winter holiday, spring break, the first week of April, and then the school year would close on Friday, the seventeenth of June. Again, following the same format that we shared with the pre-Labor Day calendar, here is a snapshot of the post-Labor Day calendar. The virtual learning day would shift by a week in November to the eighth, excuse me, shift by a week in October to the eighth of October. Again, there are some early release days for parent conferences at the elementary level in November, two full weeks in December, and then we would suggest closing marking period two in this calendar at the end of January. So, so both calendars are being recommended with the end of marking period two closing in that last week of January. I'll speak to the marking period scenario after I preview the second semester, the spring semester. Spring semester would take this form. The virtual learning day in this particular calendar in March would be, again, March the fourth. We would also be suggesting by way of this calendar, the idea that the marking period three would end prior to spring break, and marking period four would begin coming out of the spring break. School year closes on the seventeenth of June. If you counted the days like we did, you would probably recognize that there is a little bit of an imbalance here. And, and I, let me speak to that imbalance and try to provide the perspective of both the calendar committee and administration when talking about and thinking about the best way to lay out the days. I mentioned that ideally each marking period would be forty-five days long. However, that creates scenarios that place marking periods perhaps at the latter part of spring break, or breaking across January and February, or ending the first marking period in the second or third week of November. So what we are bringing forward is the idea, and we have comfort with it, the idea that the marking periods would break down this way. Second week of November for marking period one, the end of January, as we talked about, for marking period two. We would suggest that marking period three ends on that day prior to spring break, and that entirety of post-spring break through the close of the school year, which is forty-nine days, but that, that entirety would be marking period four. Strengths of the post-Labor Day calendar, closer alignment with the regional calendar format, which we had talked about before, and then it's a more familiar calendar format for our community. We will begin seeking community feedback on, on these two versions as early as tomorrow. We will synthesize that feedback towards the end of the day on the eleventh and share that with the board in advance of the action that we would ask you to take on March the sixteenth. This time, I'm happy to answer any questions from the board.
Comments from board members? Ms. Hummel?
Um, can you give me a little more information on how you're going to be soliciting community feedback, or is it going to be community? Is it going to be staff? Is it going to be Is it going to be, like, how exactly is that feedback going to be solicited?
My answer to that would be, we are going to share with our entire community the two calendar versions and ask for them to give us comments on their perceptions of how it lays out. So, it's not just staff, it would be staff and community parents, et cetera.
Ms. Ombi?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just for some clarification, Mr. Keever, so the virtual learning days are there, so while the students are learning virtually, that will be professional development for our teachers? Is that?
Could very well be. Could be potential workdays. One of the pieces that we want to, we want to signal to our community and our families that these are going to be virtual learning days, they're going to count as school days, and we're going to develop a plan around what those three days fully entail and be able to share that well in advance. So, there is the likelihood that it would be collaborative time, professional development time for teachers on those three days, for a strong portion of those days.
Thank you. And then, I just wanted to say, I'm definitely in favor of lowering the number of early release days, so I like that that's reflected in both of these. And just to reiterate, I like, I like starting earlier, so that we can begin to maybe every year, take advantage of that pre-Labor Day start and get closer to maybe some of the community college calendars eventually over time.
Ms. Young?
I just had, I guess, a question and a comment. First of all, the first calendar, where it's the early start, is that what is going to be adopted? Do we know if that's going to be adopted by our schools around the region, or is that just us?
We do know there's been some consideration of at least one other school division that very closely orders this particular school division. There, the other school divisions on the peninsula are not necessarily looking at a pre-Labor Day start.
And if we start earlier than the other divisions, is that, is there going to be conflict?
Ms. Young, that's a great question. I think that when we think of the formatting that's used with the regional calendar, part of that rationale is for the New Horizons program. And one of the scenarios would be that our students that are involved in that particular program simply wouldn't, if New Horizons and Newport News, or whomever else didn't use a pre-Labor Day start, our students who were involved in that program would not participate in New Horizons in that first week, simply because the classes hadn't begun yet. Now, towards the end of the school year, if we didn't end at the same time, there may be an expectation that those students have an additional week or few days of coursework to close out the year. Beyond that, we were not able to discern a challenge or a concern around that regional calendar formatting.
Okay, thank you. And then, my comment is, I do appreciate the continuing providing that two weeks at Christmas for our teachers. That is, having been a teacher, that's essential. I hope that will continue being, going forward, that will be one of the things that is always a recommendation for our teachers to have it, that two weeks, you're exhausted by then, and you need that time. So, if nothing else, you need the time to spend some time with your kiddos and your family. So, I really am a strong proponent of that two weeks at Christmas, so.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I'm on the committee, and I fully support the early start, the pre-Labor Day. In fact, if I had my way, we'd start even earlier than that. I think, especially given the year that we're in now, the sooner we can start working with those students again, I think the better. But I certainly, I'd like to see them start, get those few, just get a few additional days. But I, I am fully committed to the notion that we could even start even earlier than that. But I definitely, I definitely like that. I also think it's a better distribution, a more even distribution of the days in each and a marking period, and, and I felt that, it may not have been a consensus, but I felt that quite a few of the teachers that were on the committee were leaning in that direction as well. So, anyway, that's, that's where I, that's where I come in on this.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have two questions and a comment. So, my first question is, do you intend to note graduation day on this calendar?
Ms. Cook, that's a great question. We've talked about that a little bit. We felt it was a little bit premature to put a graduation date as it goes out to the community for consideration and feedback. I know that it's been a part of the calendar in years past, and I know that we are still trying to iron out and confirm our graduation date for 2021. So, at this juncture, I don't believe we would be adding a graduation date, but that doesn't mean that by the end of this particular school year, we wouldn't be in a position to designate that for 2022.
So, then you'd be asking us to take action twice on this calendar, essentially to add a graduation date?
If the board approves the graduation date, yes.
Okay, so you would be asking us to take action on this without a graduation date, and then you'd come back to us again with a graduation date at some later time?
We can either do that, or there's a possibility that when we put it out to the community and bring it back to the board, we can certainly consider adding a graduation date at that time, because I think by that point, we will have been in a position, I hope, to announce this year's graduation date and get a sense of what's happening there.
So, do you view this year's graduation date, graduation 21, connected to graduation 22?
Not necessarily, no. But it should be on, we will make every attempt to put it on the calendar, so we don't come back to the board twice.
Yeah, I think that's, if that's at all possible, I think that would be better. And then, when you ask us to take action on this, will you be making a recommendation? Will you be favoring one over the other? When you bring it to us, will you be recommending one or the other?
I think we'll be looking to where the committee was leaning, we'll be looking at the public comment, and then, most likely, we will make a recommendation to the board.
I would definitely appreciate the recommendation from you. And then, those are my two questions. And my comment was, I've never been a fan of following the regional calendar for the sake of following the regional calendar, because I think it's sort of focused on, you know, a handful of students, you know, under 200, right, that are involved in New Horizons. And so, I felt like it, that, those few hundred kids and their very important needs drove the needs for the other 11,000 kids. That said, you know, with the advent and growth of early college, then you had kind of two buckets of kids that were, where their needs were sort of at intention, right, where the earlier you started, the more that would favor the early college kids, and those numbers are starting to exceed the New Horizons kids. So, I like the idea of sort of going with the numbers and starting earlier as the early college program grows. But what I'm confused about on this calendar is why the third marking period starts on the same day regardless of when the, when the school year starts. So, it seems to me that over time, not for these two calendars, but over time, if we're going to start earlier, one of the benefits of that should be to have that third marking period start earlier, so that it helps the kids who are going to early college. Now, maybe, since we've switched to an all-year calendar as opposed to a semester, maybe that no longer matters. And so, I could be wrong there. But heretofore, the later that first semester went, the harder that it was on kids who were transitioning to Thomas Nelson. So, if we're going to start earlier, I'd like it to somehow alleviate that, that stress that those kids are under in the future, if at all possible.
Ms. Dell?
I could be completely alone in this, but in my mind, we've been tracking towards, finally getting towards five days in-person learning, full day in-person learning. We're getting there, we're getting close. In my mind, next year is absolutely five days in-person learning. Again, I could be alone in that, but that's what's, that's what's going on in my mind, is I look at the state of things. When I look at K-12 virtual learning days, three virtual learning days, I wonder, when we are five days in person, how productive those three virtual learning days actually will be, if that becomes the new reality for our students, that they are in class? How productive does that become to revert back to a virtual learning environment? And then, Ms. Ombi asks, I think essentially, I think Ms. Ombi was asking, who's teaching? Who's doing the instruction? If it's a professional development day, those three days? So, I'm curious about that, if there are any answers for that.
You're asking about the productivity of the virtual learning days. I think that the suggestion, and I think what would occur if those days finalize in the calendar that is approved, is that we would put a structure around those three days that probably feel unique and different to what the virtual learning scenario has been over the course of this school year. I think that, from the committee's perspective, I think administratively, we feel like we've learned quite a bit about how to conduct learning in the virtual setting, and what works well, and what hasn't been as successful. So, you have the pledge of administration and the committee that we would come back with, here are the parameters around which those, what those days look like, and how those days would be implemented.
Thank you. And my one comment would be, I would be entirely in favor of the pre-Labor Day option. I had not considered what Ms. Cook had mentioned, but participating in the Student Advisory Committee and knowing what those students have been asking for, for so long, the option, the ability to prepare for those high-stakes tests earlier, rather than just having that more, having more time to prepare for those tests. So, hearing from them, knowing that this is what they've been asking for, and they see it as a benefit, I'd be 100% in support of that pre-Labor Day.
Thank you. Summell?
Just to circle back, I also would be very much in favor of the pre-Labor Day for all of the different reasons I'm listening to all of you. And I also want to thank Dr. Beers for serving on the committee, and for his perspective that he's providing all of us. I can envision maybe a future in, you know, three or four years from now, whatever, where we could get to that point where we're offering not just an August 30th start, but, or, but earlier, so we could finish by the end, the first term by the end of December, and it rolls right into early college for whoever needs it. It's a nice, clean break. So, I think there are lots of things to look forward to, but this would be a really nice start to that process, and to see, see how it all works out. And also, I feel for all of the, everybody who's just desperate to get their kids back, five days, and the more we, the sooner we can do all that for them, the better, so.
Okay. So, just to make sure that everybody in the public hears this, this calendar is based on five days per week being in school.
Sir.
So, that is, that is our intention. I don't know where that's coming from. But it's kind of, but it's over.
Think you need to say what you just said again. I hope somebody's not disagreeing with that from you. So, we intend to be in school five days per week, starting next year.
That's correct, sir. Next year, we will be in school five days a week.
And one of the, one of the things that that helps us with, I think, I think we had a lot of early release days in previous calendars, because we were trying to get to 180. And so, when we start after Labor Day, it's harder to do that, to have the right number of days in school, because we start later. So, I think, I think early release days, because those days would count, and then we'd do professional development, so we would kind of check both of those blocks. You know, we have talked about starting school before Labor Day for a long time. What makes that even more attractive this year is that we would have to start on September 8th, which just feels really deep into September, as opposed to starting in August. So, even, particularly this year, I think, I'm supportive of starting before Labor Day, and frankly, any year, I think we're, I'm in favor of that. As to the virtual learning days, I think it's, I think it's important to us that we, that we keep our kids having those skills to learn online, and learn computer-based training, because, I mean, that's, you're going to be doing that for the rest of their lives. So, I think, I think having those three days, I think, is really good. As far as the regional calendar, I think with one thing that we've learned in this COVID times, is that if we're all on different schedules, it's not the end of the world. Kids will adapt, parents will adapt, we'll adapt, to make sure that our kids get to those, the early college, and they'll get to New Horizons, and they'll get to those other programs that are maybe outside of the, outside of the norm. So, I'm not as beholden to being on the, the regional calendar, making sure all the region, all the school systems in the region are on the same, the same schedule. It makes a little bit of complication for companies and vacations and that kind of thing, but, but we've all learned how to adapt. I would also agree with Mrs. Cook, that I think that, I think it's incumbent upon us to put a graduation day on the calendar that we approve. You know, people start planning their graduation day well in advance, and we're all hoping that we're going to be in a big place and on a stage, and, or at least whoever's here in 2022, on a stage and having graduation ceremonies. So, I think, I think it's important that we put that on the, on the calendar. So, if it makes any difference to you, to what you, what you present to us at the next meeting for our approval, it seems like we have a pretty solid consensus around before Labor Day. So, I hope that factors into your decision-making process a little bit, but I would be interested to hear what the public says as well, and the public input that we get. I think those are all the comments that I have. Any other board members have anything else? Dr. Beers?
Yeah, just to follow up on what you, what you just mentioned, what's the protocol for parents letting us know what their, what their views are on this? Because I think what's really important here is to have enough parents give us some feedback, because if we don't hear from many parents, it's either nobody, they don't really care which way we go, but if they really feel strongly, it's really important for them to let us, let us know. And so, how are we going to do that?
Yes, Dr. Beers, tomorrow, the calendars will be pushed up on our website. We'll be communicating with families and with staff via email, social media, like we've done for all our staff and parent newsletters, that everyone's used getting the notification, then they go to look for the information. And so, we've been very successful in getting feedback via that means in previous years.
Okay, that's just what I know.
Any other comments on the calendar? Thank you. That brings us to 9.01, Fiscal Year 2021-2022 Operating Budget Discussion. As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge that I may have an interest in the Fiscal Year 21-22 School Budget, because my wife may be an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe that I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a member of the School Board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the Fiscal Year 21-22 School Budget, because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We've got a very brief update on the operating budget, and Ms. Ewen is going to present a couple of slides tonight prior to the discussion of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This evening, I will be sharing information regarding revenue estimates with you, based on the House and Senate budget versions. This table shows a comparison between the governor's proposed budget and the House and Senate versions, as well as our current year budget. With the House version, we would see an increase of approximately 1.2 million in state revenue beyond what the governor proposed. And with the Senate version, we would see an increase of approximately 970,000 in state revenue beyond what the governor proposed. revenue beyond what the governor proposed. The governor's budget included funding for a 2% bonus, which has been converted by the General Assembly to a 5% salary increase across the 2020, 2022 biennium. Since we provided a one and a half percent increase this fiscal year, we would need to provide at least a three and a half percent increase next year to be eligible for the full state funding. There's also funding as part of the Standards of Quality for Specialized Student Support Positions at a rate of three positions per 1,000 students beginning in fiscal year 22. Funding for this would be through the Basic Aid Program. Positions included include school nurses, school social workers, school psychologists, and behavioral analysts. Happy to answer any questions.
Board members, any comments on? No, if I look at Mrs. Cook, I'll get some comments. Ms. Cook?
Really?
Yeah.
You really want me to go first?
If you go first, then all of the questions, we will, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're pretty sure you'll be thorough.
Yep. Um, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Dr. Heron and Ms. Ewing. I appreciate all the work you put into this wonderful budget and I plan to support it with gratitude for your work and, and with enthusiasm for what it will accomplish. So, so thank you for that. Just a couple of comments. I, I like the way that you folded, folded the EL teachers into this individual school budgets, just like you did the SPED last year, because I think it gives us a better sense of how resources are allocated across the schools. So thank you for that. I like that change. I wanted to comment on something one of the speakers mentioned. The, the state defines how our budgets are created. And so if you look at the entirety of the fiscal year proposed budget, you'll see in the back every single grant and how that's budgeted, right? Is that correct? So, so every single pandemic-related grant is in the back, all of them, Title I, Title II, III, IV, plus all the COVID grants, plus the Williamsburg Health Foundation grant. Is that correct?
Yes, they're all included in the financial section.
Everything's enumerated and if you have any questions, you can look in there. Thank you. I also particularly like the health and PE position, .5 FTE. We've needed that for a really long time, so I'm glad that that has made it in again and hopefully that will stick. I really particularly like the focus on equity, the position in particular, and, and having one person focused. I appreciated getting the information about what that job will do. Dr. Heron, thank you. And I look forward to an annual report to the board on our equity efforts. And I particularly like the pivot on class size. Thank you for that. I hope that that sticks as well as we get into the thick of next year and as students start to show up, I hope we're able to do that and to realize that it's a great step and I hope it's just the first step. I hope it's along a path of, of further work in that area. Regarding enrollment, I really hope that we're right. All the calls about people wanting to make a decision right now makes me wonder if more people are coming back than we are, than we're planning for and what we'll do. You know, I know that we have the, the Future Think Report that suggests otherwise, but I'm just a little bit nervous and I'm wondering how helpful it would be to poll people to find out. I, I don't know if that's something that we can rely on or not, but I, I don't know. But I do wonder if that's a valuable exercise or not. Particularly because the, the additional FTEs, the different additional teachers are at the high school level, right? Not at the elementary school level. But at the elementary school level, that's where we saw the decline, right? So if we see a resurgence there, I just hope two trailers is enough. Let me just say that. We might need some more of those. And then I, I wanted to ask a little bit, or talk a little bit about budget projections moving forward. So the sales tax, Ms. Ewing, that you projected, I know you were a little bit more conservative from what the state had projected. So I was looking back a little bit and so basically for next fiscal year, for FY22, you're kind of keeping us level with what sales tax projections were at FY19. Is that fair? Does that sound right or is that not, that's not, probably not in front of you? But you said it was a 5% reduction, is that right?
Correct. 5% reduction based on the current state estimates for next year.
Okay. All right. So I think that's really good. And then if you look on page 25, you know, projecting the expenses forward and then, and then the revenues forward, you highlight that gap in funding, right? And so I really appreciate that you're always keeping us aware that we are always looking at an impending funding gap just because of the way our funding works. And the city manager, this Williamsburg city manager proposed a tax increase, a significant tax increase, in part to cover education. And I just, I really applaud that because our students need it. And at the, at the federal and state level, not enough money is coming through to support children. And so that really, it, it falls to the local governments to take care of that. And so I appreciate that the city made that effort. And I just want to remind everyone what I said at the last meeting, which is the height of our local government funding of schools in recent memory, in the last 10 years anyway, was in the sort of fiscal year 13, 14 range. And as a percentage of the whole, it's been slightly declining. And so I just want us to be cognizant of that. I also appreciate the work on the benefits and I understand why we are, we're not passing the whole of the increase of health insurance onto our employees and I support that. But at some point, you know, we're still higher than, than our neighbors in terms of how much, what percentage of our budget we're putting towards benefits. And at some point, I think we're just going to have to do something to change that because otherwise if it, if it, if we continue to do it incrementally, it's not going to change significantly over time. So I'd like to see that change. And then I have one question and then about the, one caller asked about, I'm not quite sure I understand what this is, but asking, I think, for students to be able to stay in Bright Beginnings for another year and there's a cost associated with that? Is that, is that?
We, we don't, we don't have a system or process for students staying beyond their allocated time in Bright Beginnings. They move into kindergarten.
Okay.
And so I think the parent was suggesting that if it was funded, maybe we could make that happen and develop a process, but we don't retain students in Bright Beginnings for an extra year.
But that's not a financial issue at all, is it? It's just, okay.
It's a procedural issue.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. And then the last question I have is really related to what you just talked about, Ms. Ewing, which is the going to a three and a half percent raise? If we did that or, so three and a half would be the C, the floor, I guess. We could maybe do more. I guess my question is, what if any impact would that have on the local requests that we're making or would that all be state dollars?
Because each 1% of a salary increase costs approximately 1 million. So to add another half percent, we'd increase our expenditures by 500,000. So depending on where the state budget lands, we should be able to cover that with the additional state revenue.
So we wouldn't have to ask for any more money?
Correct.
So how high could we go without having to ask the local governments for any more money?
We've got the two, the, the budgets are, one's just under a million, the extra money that will be coming to us, extra funding from the state, and one's just over. We don't have the calc tool yet to determine exactly what our number is because we don't have that final calculation, but it's about $1 million extra from the state and that equates to a 1% raise.
Oh, 4%.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, and when I say not asking anymore, I mean any more than you've already proposed. Okay. Right. Clear. Okay, thank you. I, I would support as much money as we can give in terms of a raise, as long as it held to the amount that you've suggested we ask, that you're proposing we ask for the local, the local governments. As long as we don't increase that amount, I'm all for it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other?
I'm sorry. I would agree with Ms. Cook that I would support additional raise for our teachers, again, as long as it doesn't create any undue strain on our local funders. I appreciated, Ms. Ewing, you providing me with the, I guess, the trend across something like 10 years of the local percent increase in funding. And I think what you provided was the average over 10 years was 2.7% and the, this budget, proposed budget shows a 1.6% increase. And I think what I'd like to hear is, if, if you're able to speak to it, what cost-saving measures the division took in 2020 to be able to function with that kind of conservative budget in 2022 at a 1.6%? I think it was essentially $900,000 increase for the local. Is that about right? Roughly?
A little more than.
It's 1.5 million between the two localities of an increase.
Okay. Yeah, what kind of cost-saving measures do we take in 2020 to make that possible?
Last fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am.
In 2020? So we, in March, when COVID came along, we stopped all spending essentially at that point in time. So we didn't, we stopped all travel and stopped all non-essential spending towards the end of the year. So that contributed to the large amount of savings that we had at the end of the year.
I believe money was also sent back to our funding partners.
That's correct. And they were able in turn to fully fund our, our budget as, as proposed. The, the reason they ask is about 1.6% and we're able to keep all of the things that we need and extra personnel is because we are getting more state funding this year in the next, next budget.
Thank you. Ms. Ellenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that I, I support this budget and I concur with almost everything that Ms. Cook said and, and thank you for your detailed notes. I too am especially happy to see a focus on equity. I think that's something that many of us have hoped for, for a long time and was glad to see some specifics with regard to the equity position and, and look forward to a continued update on that and hope that, like, in, in reading the information that was provided to school board members, I see a blend of language with regard to social justice, equity lens, as well as inclusion, as it impacts students with disabilities. And so I just want to continue to learn more about how we're, we're meeting the needs of, of, of all students with regard to academic achievement gaps. And I think there are nuances to our SPED students as well as our students of color. I too would support giving our, our teachers as much of a raise as we can, so if we can push it to 4%, that would be great. And then staff's work on class size is just to be applauded. And so again, I appreciate the fact that we are going to allocate dollars based on need and looking at buildings with the highest need and, and funding that. So thank you for your hard work on that.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I fully support this budget and as I said at the last school board meeting, I gave my reasons, but I'll, I'll just mention them again. I do think that the budget reflects our past and, and current and future needs. I think it does include the impact of COVID-19 in terms of increasing the number of counselors. The whole, the whole question of equity, I think, is being clearly addressed by the creation of a position, full-time position coordinator of equity to support equity in our schools. I also think while, you know, I, I would very much support the highest possible salary increase. I think that the budget recognizes the need to still, to remain competitive for retaining and hiring our, our teachers, even within the financial climate that we, that we face. And once again, I really support superintendent and her staff for putting together a, for me anyway, a budget that really reflects our needs, present, and also what we have to deal with in the future. And I think it also does recognize, we're, we're, we're aware of, of the impact that the school division's budget has on our city council and on, on the board of visitors. And, and I think the budget is, and I think we are trying to do our very best to not overburden either one of those.
Ms. Yon?
Yes. Okay, for, well, I concur completely with what Ms. Cook said. I was especially happy this year we used current enrollment instead of projected enrollment. I totally concur with the class size 19 to 1 in our school that has more than 70% free and reduced lunch and also the salary raise for our teachers. I think that's, that's critical to keep us competitive. But I did, did have a question about, did the county tell us how much money they planned on spending for the school budget or do, do we know that? But what their, their view is, have they told us what they would like to see the budget be?
We reached out and were provided guidance that we could utilize one and a half percent as a good starting point, but we have not been given specific dollar figures.
Okay, so they, they did say one and a half percent.
Yes, that was the guidance we had been provided.
That's why we're at, okay. I guess I, I didn't want to ask that question. I hadn't thought about that until recently, but I do support giving our teachers more money largely because of what, one of the comments was that they're, they're not appreciated as a profession. That's, that's a very hard job. We don't live in Japan or Korea where teachers are revered. So I would certainly like them to know that we revere them and we respect them. So I do support the salary increase. So thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Ms. Hummel?
I'll just say, along with everyone else, that I, I support the budget and also the 4% of course. I think this has been a, a particularly, goes without saying, a difficult year for our teachers. And I also think that we've suffered with losses from teachers leaving the profession this year and it's going to be harder and harder to find, to replace teachers, to replace staff, replace, hire the counselors we need. So I think the more competitive we are, the better for our, our children. I am, this is just basically a question about how, in a typical year, are, are the schools trying, they, I guess they roll over the, well, the kids that are coming from one class to the next class, but how do they account for, can, is there a polling that, like, do they reach out to family members to say, do you have younger, younger siblings at home? Are you planning on enrolling them? I mean, is, is that part of our procedures now that we could kind of expand for this particular year to, to just ask more, deeper questions of our, just to get a handle on maybe the middle, the, the parents that took one kid out of the system, left another kid in? I'm just, it's just a question.
We certainly have a process to encourage kindergarten to enroll.
We certainly have a process to encourage kindergarten to enroll as soon as possible, and we advertise it and we push it out on our website. And we, we literally go into neighborhoods. Last year, we went into neighborhoods to get people to register. I'm not sure we have a process that runs outside of that particular grade level, but we are in a very unusual situation right now. So we can certainly look to see what's possible.
It might be a good idea to, to push it out and, and have like a suggest, you know, like if you're, especially now that you're letting everyone know, we're going back five days a week next year, let us know if your kid's coming back. I think that's, that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Ellenby.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Just circling back to a comment that Mr. Dow made earlier, and I think a caller spoke to this at our public comment last, our citizens' comment at the last meeting, with regard to the money that we give back to the county each year. Ms. Ewing or Dr. Heron, if you could speak to, so that the community understands, is there, isn't there a requirement that we give money back to the county board of supervisors every year? If you could just explain that to the community.
We give back, there's, there's no requirement that we give back money. There, no, it's not part of our contractual agreement, but over the past few years, the county has included in their CIP that we would provide back $600,000 to support the CIP each year. So at a minimum, we have to give that back to support the future CIP.
And that's what I'm speaking to. And so for the last, how many years have we done that?
Four or five years, roughly. I think it was, started with the Lafayette Auxiliary Gym, I believe. Part of that process was started at that time to find money to, to fund, to fund the gym. Now, we, we can't keep money in our system by code. It all goes back to the city and county, any that's unspent at the end of the year. And really, if you're managing funds as a school system, you're going to have a certain amount left because you don't want to take it right down to zero and risk going over, over budget. And so there always is some money left at the end of the year because we manage right down to that last, you know, 1% usually. But everything unspent goes back to our funding partners. And then we ask for the opportunity to spend some of that on an end-of-year spending plan each year.
Thank you. I just think that's helpful for the community to understand.
Yeah, I think when, when you're looking at a budget of $149 million, roughly, if you manage to $600,000 at the end, that's awful tight. If you just kind of do the, do the math there, that's, that's, I think generally we come, we come somewhere in the 1 to 1 and 1/2 that we've come in the last few years. Last year, we gave back $5 million because of our spending, you know, we, all non-essential spending was reduced and, or was stopped, and we were basically only paying salaries. And so, so, but that's obviously in the COVID times. So. Couple of other things. The points about enrollment, yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be interesting next year because we, we take a rather educated guess at kindergarten every year, and some years we do better and some years we don't. And I, I think this year, we're going to be doing a lot at all the levels, K through 12. We're going to be kind of taking educated guesses as to what we, what we do, how many students are going to, are going to be there. And it's, it's going to be, be exciting to see how we adjust going forward, not only with the, the teaching staff, but with also the classrooms and, and those types of things. That's going to be kind of interesting. When we start talking about salary increases, I think you shared us some information with us. Henrico has proposed 6.9%, Frederick 6.3%, Winchester 6%. Most of the region, two schools, and this, I think this is awful, awful dated information because it's before the House and Senate budgets, were all sitting at 3% except for Suffolk, which was 4.75%, Virginia Beach was 5%, York at the time was 2 and 1/2. We're at, I think your proposed budget says 3. There's been some intimation that, that we could do 4% without asking for any more money than what we're asking for from the, from the funding partners. So since the superintendent has proposed 3, are we as a school board asking her to go back and look at 4? And as part of the school board's budget, as long as we don't, not asking for any more money from the funders? I see a lot of shaking heads, so.
Sir, and we will, I will communicate with the board once we have the final calc tool and know an exact figure that we have of additional money because that will drive that number for, for the board.
And the other, the other piece to this revenue side is, is the reduction in sales tax, which we have, believe we've conservatively estimated that at 5% and that may not be 5%. It may be 1% or maybe what it is. And so, so we have that, we have that built-in, I don't want to say it's contingency, but a, a built-in potential for having more revenue. I'd like to make sure that we're able to fully utilize that. Flip side of that, how many kids are going to show, right? So that's what we can do. I spent some time over the weekend digging through this, through this tomb here that we call the proposed budget. And I'm, the more I've, the more I've done that, the more I, I understand and can, understand how to look at this thing, the more amazed I am at the cross-references and how it's all broken down and the state reporting and the, it's, it's, it's a pretty amazing, it's a pretty amazing document. And I keep looking for inconsistencies and I don't find it, and that kind of irritates me a little bit, but doesn't keep me from trying. So congratulations to you and the team.
It all matches.
Ms. Ewing for, for doing that. I did find one on page 41, but that's kind of, that's more of a mathematical issue than anything. Answered that question already. Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I think I'm, I think I'm okay with a budget. So other than, other than the looking to rework it for 4%, when, when Dr. Heron does that, or we feel like that we're going to be in a position next week, or next meeting to approve this and move on? Generally, we have held an asterisk on the last meeting on Tuesday because we're assigned to get, we have to get this to the, to the funding partners on the 1st of April. We've always held the last Tuesday as a potential for a special meeting just to approve the budget. With the 4%, do we think that we're, we'll be in a position next meeting to approve the budget? A lot of shaking heads, a lot of yeses, a lot of, a lot of good's. So, okay. Any other final comments on the budget before we move on to next item? Great. Once again, thank you for your great work in putting these budgets together and Dr. Heron and staff. I think the, the budget document is very, is very clear and very transparent, and I think there's a lot of, a lot of good information there. And I reiterate what some of my colleagues have said about the priorities which are shown there. So I thank you all for that. Takes us to 9.02, Return to Learn Forward WJCC Schools 2020-2021. Dr. Heron?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Keever is going to give us our meeting, normal meeting update on Return to Learn Forward to WJCC Schools. Mr. Keever?
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening again, board members. This evening, in addition to some of the health metric and data information that we'll be sharing with you, I'm joined by Dr. Stacia Barrow, who's our Director of Special Education, and she'll be providing some specific information around students in terms of their academic achievement. Want to start by sharing with you our dashboard, which is located on our webpage. We've made some recent additions to that. The one that we are particularly excited about comes across the bottom row, which indicates that as of today, 8,576 students were back onsite for learning. Additionally, last Friday, our vaccine clinic, we were able to take through 970-plus of our staff members for their second dose of vaccine, which leaves us on that left-hand side about 571 more to go to get all staff members who are interested in, in the vaccine to, to be able to have both doses. So we are very excited about that and want to, again, reiterate our strong appreciation for the county and city for helping us ensure that those shots took place and, quite frankly, that they are occurring on Fridays. Because I think as we've heard from some folks, the idea that that second shot created some, a little bit of discomfort and the, the opportunity to be able to recover a little bit on Saturday and Sunday, instead of missing work or school days, I think has been a benefit for our staff and students, of course. Today brought some good news, additional good news relative to our core indicators. This is the first day since mid-December that with our combined metric, we're below the 200 framework in terms of 10% for Williamsburg and 90% for James City County. Additionally, today was the first day since late November that we were in the moderate range in terms of percent positivity. So the data continues to get better and better as we go. This, this chart is getting busier as we share with the board, and I just want to talk to you a little bit about some of the different things that we continue to track and really are taking a look at. The far-left-hand side of this chart is now coded in blue, and that's really internal purposes because we are now also looking at specifically COVID-19 Integrated County View data, which is a seven-day piece. You may recall that the CDC updated and released new guidance in terms of looking at COVID data by community, and so we're tracking some of that information as well. So that's the first two columns in blue down the chart. You'll see some gaps there. One of the challenges that we found is that information is not always updated on the same time basis that the other CDC metrics are updated. And this just gives you a sense of how our numbers have continued to head in the right direction as far as we're concerned in terms of the combined piece, in terms of the percent positivity, et cetera. Here are the eastern region metrics as of today, declining on both case numbers and percent positivity. Both of those have been headed in a downward trend for over 40 days, and that is a good indicator of how things are going for the community. We've shared the case incidence map. This is the 14-day COVID case incidence map. You'll see that James City County is in orange. You will know that Williamsburg is just a little dot of red within that, but again, James City County is in orange. Here's a seven-day case incident map, and, and our data is particularly strong. You'll see some other places across the Commonwealth that are still in the red range, but we have dropped down into light green and green in terms of the seven-day case incident map. Here's a look at the, the heat map in terms of 14-day percent positivity. Again, our, our metrics continue to go in the right direction. As Dr. Heron shared a little bit earlier, and as our community has now been apprised via our, our social media channels, our email networks, our phone calls, we are lengthening the school day and bell schedules across all of our levels beginning Monday, March 15th. This lays out what those schedules look like. Want to just call out the fact that Toana Middle School will be joining the other middle schools with the schedule of 8:05 to 3:05. One of the reasons that we feel strongly about being able to get this accomplished is based on the mitigation strategies and factors that we're putting into place. And as we have reminded our community and board over the course of the last several months, we want folks to mask up, we want them to wash up, we want them to back up to six feet or three feet or the greatest extent possible. We want them to clean up, and then certainly we want them to speak up when involved with other folks who aren't necessarily following those same characteristics. With that, I would like to turn it over to Dr. Barrow, who is going to share with us some specific achievement data for our students. Dr. Barrow?
Thank you, Mr. Keever. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. The Special Education Department is happy to share the impact of our work, of our dedicated staff and amazing students with you this evening. As you know, our self-contained classes first returned to onsite learning in September. They have learned virtually for periods of time throughout the year, but our goal has always been to have these and all students learning face-to-face as much as safely possible. Tonight, I will share with you data about learning progress and academic supports that are in place for students with disabilities. This chart shows the falls, the Fall PALS or phonological awareness literacy screening data for students with disabilities in grades kindergarten through second. As you are aware, this year presented very unique circumstances assessing all students in grades K through 2. This assessment requires each student to be tested individually in person, and kindergarten students require two days of in-person individual testing. The blue color represents the 2019 percentage of WJCC students, grades K through 2 with disabilities, who did not meet the expected benchmark. The orange color band represents this school year's data from the fall. As you can see, there are increases year-to-year at each grade level, K through 2. We are continuing to provide intensive instruction in foundational reading skills for these students to include research-based practices that are explicit, systematic, and provide a multisensory component to enhance learning. Next, we will look at the Measures of Academic Progress Data, or MAPS. WJCC students in grades 3 through 8 took the Math and Reading MAPS Assessment. These assessments are computer adaptive and adjust to each student's learning level. As a student answers questions, the test responds by adjusting the level of difficulty. MAP growth is used to measure a student's performance level at different times of the school year and also to monitor academic growth and to inform targeted instruction. Prior to this school year, it has not been possible to pull subgroup-specific data from the division's MAP testing. Our Accountability Department has identified a process to make this information available to us beginning this school year. This chart represents the average RIT score for students with disabilities by grade level seen on the green line as compared to all WJCC students based on fall MAP testing results. As you can see, the smallest gap is third grade and the largest gap is in eighth grade. Similar to the reading scores, this chart shows the average math MAP score for our students with disabilities as compared to all WJCC students. Again, the smallest gap is in grade 3 and the largest gap exists in grade 8. In examining report card grades at the elementary level, 25 students with disabilities had a failing grade on their report card for marking period 1 of this current year. For marking period 2, 47 students had a failing grade on their report card. We have included last year's data as a point of reference. This slide shows the middle school students with disabilities with failing grades. It is representative of all courses, including electives, for the first marking period in the 2019, 2020, and the 2020, 2021 school years. There was also a decrease of 96 in the overall number of middle school students with disabilities from last year to this year during marking period 1. Our current middle school students take six classes per day, four on a day, four core classes on a daily basis, and a blend of two to three elective courses on the AB rotating schedule. For marking period 1 of this current year, 246 out of 363, or 67% of the middle schoolers with disabilities, earned all As, all As and Bs, or all As, Bs and Cs. Comparatively, 345 students with disabilities out of 462, or 75%, earned these grades during the same marking period during the 2019, 2020 school year. The current slide shows a number of students with failing grades representative of all courses for the second nine weeks at middle school. And again, last year's data is provided as a reference point. Here we see a decrease in the number of students with disabilities by 104 students from 19 to 20 to 2021. 225 out of 363 middle school students with disabilities. 225 out of 363 middle school students with disabilities, or 62%, earned all As, all As and Bs, or all As, Bs and Cs during marking period 2 of this current school year, as compared to 70%, 329 out of 467 from marking period 2 during the 19-20 school year. You can see the breakdown on this slide, and a particular note are the 31 students who earned all As. As we move on to high school, this slide shows a number of high school students with failing grades across all classes for marking period 1 of the 1920 and 2021 school years. These are students with disabilities specifically. There was also a sizable decrease of 145 in the overall number of high school students with disabilities from last year to this year during marking period 1. Here we see the high school students with disabilities who've earned passing grades, all As, As and Bs, or As, Bs and Cs. And it shows the comparison for marking period 1 for the 1920 and 2021 school years. This slide shows a number of high school students with disabilities who have failing grades on their report cards for marking period 2, with last year's data again included as a reference point. Again, we see a sizable decline in the number of students with disabilities by 162 from last year during marking period 2 to this year. This slide highlights a number of high school students with disabilities who've earned all As, all As and Bs, or all As, Bs and Cs for the second marking period of this current school year, as well as last year. As we gauge the impact of virtual learning has had on the progress of students with disabilities, it's important to note that while the metrics from the aforementioned data include the majority of the special education population in WJCC, there is a subset of students who do not participate in these division-wide assessments and whose report card grades are not based on their assigned grade level standards. The nature and severity of these students' disabilities are so significant and intensive that they require curriculum modifications and specially-designed instruction for the majority of the school day. Accordingly, there is no universal way to assess and subsequently share with you their progress since it is highly individualized in nature for each student in this subset. What I can share is how the division has worked to provide these students with access to their educational program to ensure their educational needs are appropriately addressed in light of these circumstances. As you recall, students with the most intensive special education needs were provided in-person instruction beginning September 14th. This instruction was provided four days per week for approximately 10 weeks. Their in-person instruction resumed on February 16th for four days per week, along with pre-K through 5 grade students who are attending in person two days per week on a hybrid schedule. During the in-person instruction, these students received specially-designed instruction throughout the school day, direct instruction from their related services providers such as speech therapists, occupational therapists, and physical therapists, to name a few. Out of 273 students who were able to attend in person starting on September 14th, 213, or 78% of them did. So we're confident that they have received the benefit of in-person instruction as well as access to virtual instruction during times when our buildings were not functionally available. For the students whose families elected not to have them attend in person, they were able to participate virtually alongside their peers. The teachers of these classrooms provided in-person and virtual instruction simultaneously, and when the in-person student day ended at 2:00 p.m., they then provided one-to-one or small group support to students that required it, including Fridays. As you might imagine, there are numerous students with disabilities who, like other students, experience challenges with social-emotional learning, particularly in a remote environment. The behaviors can manifest themselves by way of physical or aggressive behaviors that can cause harm or injury to the student themselves or others in their surroundings, a higher frequency of emotional escalation, which can cause students to run or elope to leave the situation, and high attention-seeking behaviors. During virtual learning, we have seen some very promising outcomes on the population of students with disabilities who require intensive instruction in these domains. Through the collaborative efforts of special education teachers and the behavior intervention specialists, a marked decrease has been observed in attention-seeking behaviors, the need for prompting to redirect students, a reduction in the number of meltdowns due to overstimulation, and physically aggressive behaviors. Similarly, we are pleased with the notable increase observed in student independence and readiness to learn, positive peer engagement and staff engagement, and overall participation in the instruction. In an effort to address the question regarding the impact of virtual learning on the progress of students with disabilities, I'd like to share the feedback garnered from the WJCC speech-language pathologists. Out of 1,918 students with disabilities as of the December 1 child count, approximately 847 of them received speech-language therapy either as a related service or as a direct service due to their primary disability of speech-language impairment. When asked the question about student progress, 13 out of 17 speech-language pathologists who responded noted that their students were either making sufficient progress or some progress. No one noted that their students were making limited or no progress. SLPs were asked about student attendance during speech sessions. The results indicate that one SLP noted that all students on her caseload attend all speech sessions, and all of the goals have been addressed and implemented. Seven SLPs indicated that the students on their caseload attend most speech sessions, and most of the goals prescribed in the IEPs have been addressed and implemented. And five SLPs noted that the students on their caseload attend some speech sessions, and some of the goals in the IEPs have been addressed or implemented. A success is noted with virtual speech instruction include: students regularly attend, they are engaged and they fully participate in the sessions, the sessions provide more opportunities for one-to-one service delivery, and SLPs can effectively address articulation goals since masks are not required. There's also been an increased collaboration with parents and families. Notwithstanding these successes, SLPs also share some challenges they've experienced providing virtual instruction. These include sometimes inconsistent student attendance, environmental distractions in the learning setting, and difficulty navigating the virtual platform, as well as difficulty addressing pragmatic and social skills goals. SLPs have been able to mitigate these challenges by working with families to schedule speech services at mutually convenient times. This helps to ensure attendance as well as guarantee that an appropriate instructional environment exists. Difficulties navigating the virtual platform, or Zoom, have been overcome by providing training to families and students on how to navigate it and access it, and also by providing written instructions and guidance to share with families to facilitate ease of use. SLPs have scheduled small groups and/or one-to-one sessions with students to support instruction toward these pragmatic language goals. And they've also gotten creative and worked collaboratively with families to measure speech goals. One such way has been to have parents record students demonstrating speech skills and share those recordings with the SLP. Over the next several weeks, as we settle back from the sheer delight of having more of our students back in the building, and also having them for longer now, we will be working hard to get a clear understanding of where they are academically, socially, and behaviorally. Once we know where they are, we will be able to appropriately identify how we must respond to address their needs. Rest assured, those conversations have already been and will continue to be a regular part of our focus for the work we do here in WJCC. In partnership with the Curriculum and Instruction Department, we will be working with them and school teams to identify students who may benefit from being a part of a summer learning opportunity. From a purely special education lens, we will also be working with IEP teams to help them identify students who may require extended school year services. Keep in mind, this is not summer school, but a provision under the IDEA for special education students who meet the criteria in the regulations for this service to address their IEP goals. Also, using the guidance from the Virginia Department of Education, we are exploring programmatic needs to address any COVID recovery services that special education students may require as a result of the school closure from March to June 2020. We are aware that some of the special education services were functionally unavailable due to the buildings being closed, and we've used that as a starting point for this process. We look forward to providing future updates on the progress of students with disabilities. Thank you.
Board members, that concludes the formal presentation this evening. Dr. Barrow and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Selby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Keever and Ms. Barrow. I wanted to speak to the students with disabilities. Thanks for providing the comparison with students with disabilities and the typically-developing students. And I'm glad to, I like the take-in-action slide, and so it's nice to hear that considerations will be given for extended year, year-round. I know we've talked about robust summer school for all of our students, but I think particularly some of our sped students, and some of those who have more severe and profound disabilities have lost a lot, whether it's, you know, social, emotional, adaptive skills, language. So thanks for great work and a very detailed presentation. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Dr. Barrow. I have a question about your social-emotional learning behavior slide, where you observed a decrease in some, I guess what you could call negative behaviors. And I, in your, I guess when we have the kids back in school more often, you might know, but do you think the decrease in those behaviors are because we've just been with the kids less, or, and so had less, fewer opportunities to observe those behaviors? Or do you think there's actually a decrease in those behaviors?
I think that could be attributed to multiple factors. I think that having, these are students who were attending in person. They were already a part of a learning environment that consisted of a very small number of students anyway. So they were with their same classroom peers. Again, not all of the students' families elected to send them in, but by and large, the majority did, so.
But even so, we still had them fewer hours than last year, for instance?
We did. We had them for five hours, four days a week.
I guess I was just, I just was curious whether that was just because of our contact with the students, whether that was the reason for the decrease, or whether there was actually a decrease. Anyway, I'm just curious about that. So I guess when we get everybody in a little bit more, we might know, might see a change there maybe. I don't know.
Yes, I think certainly having them in person longer will give us an opportunity to see if there's an uptick in behaviors, to see if those behaviors that have decreased have stabilized and see what returns, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Mr. Dell?
Thank you, Dr. Barrow, for your presentation. It made me wonder, though, so we've received academic achievement updates for middle school, high school. The most recent one was for elementary school. I guess for my own clarity, and maybe for anybody watching that's perhaps wondering this too, were students with disability achievement numbers folded into those previous reports? Is this just kind of parsed out from those previous reports as well?
The former reports were for all students.
All students? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your report. Any other comments from board members? Ms. Hummel?
So, do we have a handle on where those missing students, are they being homeschooled? Are they, like, do they just, like, do we have a handle on where they are and are, do you anticipate they'll all be coming back?
Well, let me, let me address the first part of your question. So I think the sharp decline in the numbers is attributed to a variety of things. It could be anything in terms of the number of parents who've elected to parentally place their children in private schools or to homeschool them. Keep in mind, as we look at marking period 1 of last year to marking period 1 of this year, you have to take out those graduates, our transfer students also. We've had, seen a very transient population for students with disabilities. Students with disabilities also have to go through the eligibility process every year, every three years, actually. So there may be students who were found ineligible due to that triennial eligibility process. So lots of different reasons. We, I can't tell you specifically that, oh, it's because of this, or it's because of that, but there's a myriad of factors that would attribute to those, those numbers.
Is your office of higher, you know, higher special need population next year, go back to five?
Lots of students?
I would certainly, I don't have my crystal ball to know that, but I would certainly think that's something that would certainly be possible if we're operating on a full five-day schedule, because the services we provide in the public school setting are not, private schools don't have to adhere to the guidelines of IDEA. So we may see an increase.
Any other comment from board members? Ms. Cook?
Mr. Chair, I have more of a general comment that's not related to tonight's presentation, but to, but related to return to learn, if, if, okay. Thank you. I just, several board members tonight have commented about five days a week next year, and I just wanted to, you know, echo my, you know, those comments and lend my support towards a return to learn that's more, more full-time next year. But I, I think it's important or incumbent on us to remind everybody that, you know, community transmission could still be high. I think there's a spectrum or a continuum where on one side, you know, safety trumps everything, and on the other side, in-person learning trumps everything. And I don't, I still think now and probably then, there will be no perfectly right decision. I just think you have to measure the competing interests. And so after a year, I personally support the idea of going back, but it's not without risk, and it's not without compromise. And I just think we need to be clear and transparent about that, what we are and are not able to do. So I think we need to be transparent about, you know, the fact that we're not going to have a testing program, that our contact tracing abilities are going to be limited, if, if at all, that we don't have enough educational space. If we had another elementary school right now, we would be in a different situation. And as we add more high school teachers next year, the same would be true for high school space, because that's, there are, all those nine new teachers are going to need new classrooms that don't exist. We may not have enough teachers, depending on, you know, how many decide to come back. So, you know, and in our community, more kids are electing to come in person than in other school districts where a higher percentage have, have asked for virtual options. So I just, I just want to say that transparently. I think that we need to, as we move forward and as families weigh their options, I do think we need to, I think the idea of in-person learning needs to trump the other things, but I don't think it's all, I think we just need to be transparent about the mitigation efforts we are and are not able to put in place. And I think the idea of six feet is not going to happen. I think we'll be lucky in some cases to get kids three feet apart. And we're going to mask, and we're going to clean, and we're going to do all those things, but, but I think moving forward, as we start planning, I think we just need to be crystal clear and transparent about what mitigation efforts and what best practices we are in the position to employ and which ones we're not. So I just wanted to.
Just to add to that, Ms. Cook, you're absolutely right. And at the next board meeting, we're going to do some scenario planning and inform the public of exactly what that will look like coming back more days this year and also into next year with even more students. So we're going to lay, we're going to be inviting our experts back to the table to talk about mitigation strategies and those layers of mitigation when we are unable to do six feet apart because of our limited space. So we're going to really have an open conversation and really talk about the risks involved in moving forward, which we are ready to do. Thank you for that.
I didn't mean to get ahead of you. I just was hearing it a couple times.
Great, great comment. Thank you.
Any other board members that have comments?
Can I just ask a question about, if, if we can get an update, since we had a lot of public comments about, about the athletics? I was under the impression that we kind of all, at the last board meeting, so if you could just give us an update for the community about what the latest is with the football and with maybe the track? I think that was the last.
Mr. Kiefer can certainly do that, or Dr. Worley may be either somewhere ready to speak.
We did share that beginning March 1st, we would allow limited spectators to participate in athletic events. And I say limited spectators, generally we're talking about family members. The number for football games, at least for ones that we host, is 250. We can't speak to what it is that's going to occur at some of our visiting schools. The number for indoor activities is 25, and so that's really related to only the home team that is hosting that particular event. I do know that there's continued conversation around mask use and cross-country. The athletic directors and Dr. Worley have met several times on that and are coming to a conclusion in terms of further, further looking at some of the concerns that were brought forward about competition, running, and mask-wearing. But, but we will see, I think, pretty strongly, mask-wearing with internal or inside competitions. I think you can anticipate that. But we continue to look at it. Dr. Worley's just stepped in. I think I captured it, Dr. Worley.
Just so that, those, so the people that were calling tonight about not being able to see their kids watch a football game, is that taken care of now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So we communicated, I believe now, we're allowing spectators. It was the first week. We did not.
Thank you. You want to talk about athletes and masks and cross-country? Are we, are we there yet, or are we still developing?
We are very deep in that, and we are discussing that with ADs, and we'll be communicating some information very soon.
Thanks. I noticed on the, on the, on the schedule there, all three middle schools were on the same schedule, and that's, and that's a change for us, but it's because we're in, we're in the hybrid, hybrid at the, at the middle school level. If we were to go back, we're five days a week where everybody's going to be there, we would not have the infrastructure to support that. Is that a true statement or a false statement?
That is a statement that we're going to continue to work on. So the, our ability, our ability to maneuver all four middle schools onto the same schedule in the hybrid format is enhanced based on the fact that it's the hybrid format.
Thank you for correcting my number of middle schools there. But, okay, great. Thank you. You know, I think it's important to understand that, that this has been a challenging school year for everybody. Instruction has happened. Kids have learned. It might not be as efficient as we liked for the, for the everybody. You know, teachers are working hard, students are working hard, parents are working hard, everybody's working hard, but, you know, nothing beats a teacher in a classroom with the students. Mrs. Cook makes a very good point. Everybody here wants five days a week. We're planning on five days a week. We want to get to five days a week. The fact of the matter is COVID-19 is going to be with us for some time to come, and we just have to learn how to deal with it. And we have to learn that, just like, just like the flu and other issues that we have in school from a health perspective, it's just, it's going to be another one of those things that we're going to have to deal with. Vaccinations are good, very good. Mask-wearing, you know, social distancing when, as best you can, at all times you can, is good, and those things need, have obviously seemed to have shown effect with our, with our virus numbers in the community and our community spread. And so we just need to make sure that we continue that, and, and we will work through how we can keep going forward and get kids in school and have some football games and musicals and some plays and all those other things that, that are an important part of our children's education in our public schools. And so, you know, that's, that's the direction that we're headed.
Comments from board members before we move on? Thank you, Mr. Kiefer, Dr. Heron, Dr. Barrow, Dr. Worley, for the update tonight. Appreciate your, appreciate your good work, and we look forward as we continue to move down the path. So, thank you. With that, we move to 10.01, personal actions. Can I get a motion to approve the personnel actions as presented this evening?
Chair, I move that we approve personnel actions as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Olenby. Is there a second?
Second.
Was there any discussion? Ms. Robertson?
Ms. Olenby?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Move to 10.02. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase of 10 school buses from Sunny Merriman Incorporated?
Chair, I move that we purchased 10 school buses in the amount of $1,162,822 from Sunny Merriman.
Thank you, Mr. Dowell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there any discussion? This gets us back on track towards our, our bus replacement for aged buses that we have out there. So I think this is, this is an important thing for us to move forward with. Any other discussion? Ms. Robertson?
Mr. Dowell?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Ms. Olenby?
Aye.
Ms. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye, thank you. Board member comments. Ms. Young?
I really don't have any, other than just say thank you to staff for all of their hard work, keeping us informed.
Thank you. Dr. Beers?
I really don't have anything else to say except for parents to let us know what their thoughts are about our calendar options and continue to support our efforts to get all of your students back into the classroom.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Olenby?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad that all pre-K through 12th grade students are, are back two days a week, for those who've chosen to do that. And I know that from pulling my own two kids, the owl technology that Mr. Landers has talked about seems to be effective, and I was glad to see a picture of it on the front page of the Daily Gazette. It actually looks like an owl. And I've heard that when it turns on, it goes hoot, hoot. And so that technology has been helpful. And again, in pulling my kids, they said that the sound quality is great, and it's nice to be able to look at the entire classroom and not just their teacher's face. So thanks for all the technology.
Hummel?
Really, nothing. I'm speechless.
That makes one. Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra for their partnership in providing really thoughtful information, thoughtful and entertaining and engaging information to our students. I also wanted to comment that I purchased the streaming service to watch our athletic competitions, and it's not the same, but it's a great substitute, and it's really nice to be able to cheer on our student athletes, even though they can't hear us. But it's, it's a good way to support the, the community. And then also, I just wanted to say that, you know, Mr. Snipes brought a bunch of items to us today, and I was kind of feeling badly about that because I know he's been, he and his team have been incredibly busy dealing with the pandemic, but because there was a CIP of zero in the current budget, he'll eventually get to breathe and rest. But, anyway, I was surprised to see so much of that, but eventually it will settle down for him.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mr. Dowell?
Ms. Olenby, you mentioned the owl. I had a conversation with my fifth grader, and I was asking him if, as he was home, if he was able to view the classroom using the owl, and he looked at me like I lost my mind. What's an owl going to do in the classroom in the fifth grade? But it was a funny moment. But I, I wanted to thank you, Dr. Heron, and your staff for doing the hard work of figuring out how we can allow parents, spectators to these sporting events. And you did it on a dime. You pivoted really quickly, and I appreciated you figuring out how to do that and allow spectators to be there safely. And I know our parents appreciate that, too. Our athletes, I'm sure, are very grateful for that, so thank you. I did want to ask, it was asked again, and I know I've asked and other board members have asked for, in the not-too-distant future, some kind of visual, some kind of understanding about what, I'm kind of phrasing summer learning opportunities rather than summer school, where you have to earn that opportunity to be in summer school, but summer learning opportunities, what those will look like and who can be involved or engaged in that. That will be helpful for, for our parents and our students. Thank you.
Absolutely. If I may respond, Mr. Chair, I've actually, we've just gone through the first draft of a proposal for summer school. We've gone through a second draft, and we should be in a position to share some of those details and what it'll look like with, with the board, with the public fairly soon.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I also like to, to add on, Ms. Cook, about the Williamsburg Symphony Orchestra and their, their initiative to, to be a part of the solution. I think that's, I think that's awesome. I'm not sure about facial expressions and masks and if that all kind of works, but I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's good. As, as I mentioned, we are now K through 12 are in school, and thank the teachers for their work and, and making that happen and add to the learning of our students. I think for our, our students and the, the work that they're going to, they're going to be doing back in the classroom, I know that they have been doing lots of work virtually, but I'm sure it's, it was good for them to walk back in their buildings and, and I'm sure they kind of brought back, brought back what school was to them, and that's, I think that's a good thing. Best of luck to our athletes who are on the field. I know we have had some football games last weekend, and I'm sure there were other athletic events. I've seen a couple of newsletters, and so I wish them all the best and they continue on with their competitions. I want to thank the staff for, for all the work tonight. There were many items on the agenda that required a lot of staff work with, from the calendar to the budget to the return to learn and others. It's a lot, it's a lot of work getting ready for a school board meeting, and I, I really appreciate that. And I want to, thanks to the board members for their, obviously, hard review of the budget and for the great questions that we asked. The next school board meeting, it doesn't, it's not the superintendent's budget anymore. It's the school board's budget that we present to the funding partners, and I think we've done, we've done our due diligence there. So I, I thank the school board for their, their significant work on getting to understand the budget and moving that forward. With that, 12.01, upcoming events. On March 10th, we have the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting at 3 o'clock, will be virtual. On March 18th, we have a School Liaison Committee meeting at 8 o'clock AM, also virtual, and the Policy Committee meeting is, is meeting on the same date, March 18th, at 8:30 AM.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair, and the Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting this Thursday, the 4th, at 6:30, virtually?
Virtually, okay.
And the Policy Meeting, Policy Committee on the 4th, 8 AM.
March 4th, 8 AM. Thank you. Upcoming meetings, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors and City Council on March 12th at 9 o'clock in the morning, which will be virtual. On March 16th at 6 o'clock here at the Annex, we have a closed session of the school board. And at 6:30, followed by a meeting at 6:30, and also here at Room 300 in the Annex with a regular meeting. And then April 13th, 6 o'clock here at the Annex, we have another closed session of the school board, followed at 6:30 on April 13th with a work session in Room 300 here.
What date did you?
It says 13.
13, okay.
Does that fit in your calendar?
Yeah. I thought you said the 18th. I'm just not hearing, I thought you said the 18th.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Olenby.
Olenby? You said Olenby. What? You said Olenby. He's just punchy now.
It's 9:21.
It's early.
It has been for the, for the previous meetings, hasn't it? Agenda items for the next regular meeting, the proposed agenda items will roll over into action items. And with that, without objection, we're adjourned. Thank you.
My goal was 8:30.